Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to the June meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. We have a special introductory tonight. At this point, I'd like to introduce Paul Mueller, Director of the Greenwich Coral Society.[110.11][110.11](APPLAUSE).
As some of you probably know, we're going to France to represent the city of Greenwich as part of the sister city relationship France-Vienne. And we'd like to share with you a little bit of our enthusiasm and hope that it sparks some of your enthusiasm as well for this project. It's hot, so let it be short.[131.69][131.69](MUSIC)
(SINGING) On our front de la patrie, le jour de gloire est animé. Contre nous de la tyrannie, les fonds d'argent sont grand et lourds. Les fonds d'argent sont grands et lourds. Entendez-vous dans les campagnes, l'usine ces féroces soldats? Ils viennent jusqu'à ton bras, régorger nos fils aux compagnons. Aux hommes citoyens, formez-toi à taillons. Marchons, marchons, que ça guette bien après nos sillons.[198.12][198.12](APPLAUSE). Oh, say can you see by the long, dirty light? What so proudly we hailed at the firelight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars grew the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? They proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, Ozz, as our spangled banner yet waves? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[274.83][274.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much, one and all, for coming and sharing your talents with us tonight. I would now like to recognize our first-electman, Peter Tessie, who will explain a little bit about what is involved here and offer a resolution to send this group on their way to France. Mr. Tessie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Welcome, members of the Greenwich Coral Society. In 2006, Mrs. Craig Stapleton, wife of Ambassador Craig Stapleton, United States Ambassador to France, and honorary members of the Alliance Française of Greenwich, and Daniel Vach, President of Alliance Française of Greenwich, began proceedings to create a sister-city relationship between Greenwich and the town of Vienne, France. The first-electman of Greenwich and the mayor of Vienne, France, signed formal documents to this effect in March 2007 and reaffirmed this new relationship again in October 2007. Both towns have agreed to prepare cultural exchanges as the first part of this new relationship. The Greenwich Coral Society accepted the opportunity of launching the first cultural exchange in support of this sister-city's relationship and has produced an important concert tour and diplomatic exchange opportunity as representatives of the Greenwich community. The concert tour will occur in July 2008 and include performances in Vienne and at the ambassador's residence in Paris on July 4, 2008. Now, therefore, on this ninth day of June 2008, it is the sense of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting that several Greenwich citizens be identified to represent the town of Greenwich as its ambassadors to its sister city of Vienne, France. Greenwich ambassadors on this inaugural cultural exchange shall be Renee Ketchum, President of Alliance Française of Greenwich, Daniel and Susan Vach of the Alliance Française of Greenwich, Robert Luce, Chairman of the Greenwich Coral Society and his wife Barbara, and Erfurth E. Porter II of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting and his wife Jane. The Greenwich Representative Town Meeting salutes the Greenwich Coral Society, its director, Paul Mueller, and the aforementioned ambassadors, and extends through them our best wishes to the citizens of our sister city, Vienne, France. And I so move. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize other individuals who have participated in the planning and support of this endeavor. And as I mentioned, Renee Ketchum earlier, also Jean-Louis Guerin, and Elizabeth and Michael Buddy have also been an integral part of planning for this wonderful cultural exchange between our two cities. So it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to support this endeavor. And again, thank you to the Greenwich Coral Society for making it such a wonderful and richly rewarding exchange. Thank you.[468.25][468.25](APPLAUSE).
Job well done. Returning to the business of our meeting tonight, as all members have received a copy of the minutes of our May 12 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. I do have one change to those minutes, which appears on page 19 of the draft minutes. This refers to the vote on Ms. Foseliotis's motion to reduce a line item relating to the Greenwich High School auditorium project. The reported vote in favor was 72. In fact, due to an error on one of the voting cards handed in, in terms of the tally that was made, the vote in favor was 69. So that change will be reflected in our minutes. Are there any other changes suggested to the minutes of our May meeting? Hearing none and absent objection. Well, is there any objection to that change from 72 to 69? That may be adopted upon unanimous consent. And hearing no further suggested changes, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of town meeting, I'd simply, I'd like to make a brief report to you. During the RTM's last term, the RTM adopted two resolutions regarding coordination of the town's only comprehensive long-term plan, the Plan of Conservation and Development, or P-O-C-D, and the Long-Term Capital Plan prepared annually in connection with the annual budget. The first of these two resolutions was placed on the call by the Land Use Committee and was adopted at our October 2006 meeting. It called for the new P-O-C-D, which is currently being prepared by the Planning and Zoning Commission, to describe all capital improvements required to achieve its goals, for its periodic updating, and for the creation of a special committee to look at how better to coordinate the P-O-C-D and the capital plan. That resolution was adopted by a vote of 120, in favor, 60 opposed, and four abstentions. The special committee was set up under the chairmanship of Josh Brown of District 8 and met during much of the year 2007. It produced a report that was distributed at the time of our December 2007 meeting. At that meeting, we adopted a resolution approving 12 specific recommendations made in the report, and the vote on that resolution was 140 in favor, 20 opposed, and two abstentions. Because the object is better coordination between the P-O-C-D, which is prepared by Planning and Zoning, and the capital plan, which under our charter is the responsibility of the first-electman, some of the recommendations relate to each. The Planning and Zoning Commission expects to get a preliminary draft of the P-O-C-D into our hands this month, so that we will have it as summer reading. With the encouragement of Mr. Brown, the Land Use Committee met last Monday evening, June 2, with our first-electman, Peter Tessie, to follow up on the implementation of those recommendations that relate to his role in preparing the capital plan. The committee had a wide-ranging discussion with Mr. Tessie. While little progress has been made in implementing specific recommendations, he indicated that he is broadly sympathetic with the goals of the recommendations. These are to ensure that the CIP process, which generates the capital plan, considers a more comprehensive range of the town's capital needs when setting priorities, and that the process be conducted in a more open fashion with more public input. In past years, many projects have not gotten into the capital plan, and the utility of the capital plan is lessened if it fails to account for future capital needs. Just as an example, the current capital plan does not include any funding for improved facilities for the senior center, which is something that we'll be considering when we get to item 15 this evening. Mr. Tessie indicated that he wants to consider the special committee's recommendations in the context of developing the fiscal year 2009-10 budget, a process that will begin next month. As to those recommendations that call for charter changes, he indicated that he would prefer to make those changes after a successful trial of the proposed changes. The Land Use Committee will continue to monitor response to the two resolutions in the months ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Despina Foseliotis, who is Chair of the 75th Anniversary Committee.
September 16, 2008 marks the 75th anniversary of the first meeting of the RTM. It was a historic meeting in that this was the first representative town meeting in the state of Connecticut. From historic archives, I learned that legislators in Hartford initially scoffed at our request for an RTM, but benevolently granted us our right to a representative town meeting with an "if that's what they want, give it to them" attitude. It wasn't long before other towns in Connecticut realized what a practical idea a representative town meeting was in lieu of a town meeting and followed our lead. April 28, 2008, Tom Byrne and Joan Caldwell called together a committee to plan the Diamond Jubilee celebration of this historic, august, and sober body. This committee represents all 12 districts of our RTM. I was elected chairman. Our parameters were: it was to be an apolitical celebration honoring those who serve and have served the RTM. In particular, it was to honor our long-serving members. We were to honor those who have served in the RTM and have gone on to higher government service. We were to remind the citizens of Greenwich that volunteerism is alive and well in our town. It was to further acquaint the citizens of our town how the RTM works. It was to be a celebration free to our members and open to our community. It was to be an opportunity for the citizens of Greenwich to meet and mingle with their legislative district representatives. It was to be an event that will enable RTM members to mingle with representatives from other districts and get to know other fellow members of the RTM. As far as was feasible, we were not to encumber the citizens of Greenwich. Above all, it was to be a celebration of the accomplishments of the hallmark of Greenwich Town Government, our representative town meeting. All these parameters were met at both the 25th and 50th anniversary celebrations. Our committee has been dedicated and great. We are on our way to making the 75th anniversary an occasion to be remembered. But this is not only the committee's celebration, it is yours. We expect the participation and help when called upon from each and every one of you, and that is what will make this affair memorable. A party can only be as successful as its participants make it and want it to be. Bring your families and invite your constituents. I am formally announcing herewith that the date of the celebration is Sunday, October 19, 2008. The place is Greenwich High School Student Center. The time, 2 to 5 p.m. Mark your calendars. I don't see you writing. The 25th and 50th anniversary celebrations of the representative town meeting made history and headlines. Newspaper reports indicated they were spirited and fun affairs. Can we, the members of the 2008 session of the RTM, possibly do less at its 75th anniversary? It's Diamond Jubilee. Thank you.[1044.19][1044.19](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mrs. Foseliotis, for the good work that you and your committee are doing. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting pursuant to a notice that I sent out to our district and committee chairs. It was the consensus of those reporting to place the following items on the consent calendar, and I will come back to those shortly. Those are items 5, 13, 14, and 16. To place, that's on the consent calendar, to place on our combined calendar, where we actually will get committee reports and have discussion but take one vote, are items 8, 11, 12, and 15. Hopefully, everyone has received notice that items 1 and 4 have been withdrawn, and we will not take them up this evening, which would leave for us to consider separately items 2, 3, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 17. So at this point, I will now place the following four items on our consent calendar. If they remain on that consent calendar, all that we will hear about them is what I am about to say. There will be no committee reports and no debate. Item number 5 is a resolution to appropriate $700,000 with respect to the Greenwich High School Clark House roof. Item number 13 is the appropriation of $300,000 with respect to a public works account entitled Waste Removal Services. Item number 14 is the appropriation of $90,000 for a public works account entitled Electrical Services. And item number 16, the last of the items that I will place on our consent calendar, is the acceptance of a gift of a new gazebo valued at $25,000 to replace the existing gazebo in Bruce Park. And the gift is from the Hortalis Garden Club, if I pronounce that properly. Apparently not. See Ms. Jenkins on that. Okay. Is there any objection to the placement of those four items on our consent calendar? Hearing none and absent objection. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 5, 13, 14, and 16, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will now take up, well, at this stage, I will recommend a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of combining items 8, 11, 12, and 15 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 8, 11, 12, and 15 for voting purposes. Hang on, just let me finish. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. You have a point of information, Ms. Edwards? We can, when, the question was, is it possible to separate one of those items from the combined calendar? The answer is yes. When it comes before us, that would be accomplished through a motion to divide. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, but we can separate it later. Well, let's put it this way. There is now pending before us a motion to suspend the rules to combine those four items. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules to combine items 8, 11, 12, and 15, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. And that will leave, we'll then take up those four items first, and that would leave to consider separately 2, 3, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 17. So we will begin with the first of those combined items, which is item number 8, Dr. Susan Wallerstein of the Greenwich Public Schools.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item number 8, resolve that the Board of Education be authorized to accept the donation of a veterans memorial at Hamilton Avenue School from the Chickahominy Reunion Association.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 8 has been moved and seconded. May we have the committee reports on this, beginning with Robert Brady, Chairman of our Education Committee?
Good evening. The Education Committee met on Monday, June 2. We consider this item. All districts except number 3 were represented. Steve Anderson of the Board of Ed, Rich Calcavecchio, Tony Byrne, Dr. Wallerstein were present. And number 8 is a gift, a $15,000 gift of decorative bricks from the Chickahominy Reunion Association to grace the war memorial at Hamilton Avenue School. Our vote was 11-0-0 to recommend this item. We did have concerns with the memorandum of understanding. Our understanding with, on that is that it is being worked upon. Thank you.
Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item, number 8, was presented by Sue Wallerstein along with the basketball court that was donated and completed under a cash donation. This memorial will be an in-kind, not a cash donation. It is expected to cost $15,000. Such donations are, require Board of Ed approval, with such approval focused on quality, appropriateness, and safety. In addition, it was explained by one of the delegates that there is a history of veterans playing at the basketball court at Hamilton Avenue, and they want to ensure that this tradition continues. This item was not referred in the call, but was referred to finance in the explanatory, so we chose to go ahead and cover it. We voted 12-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Karen Sodikon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. The Parks and Rec Committee took up item 8 even though there was some confusion as to whether or not it was referred to us. The clerks often gave me instructions to do so, but of course, we're not on the call as being referred. Bob Brady brought to my attention that, looking at the explanatory and the memorandum of understanding, that we should look at it. If you've looked at those, under the term and conditions under 4, the Chickahominy Reunion Committee agrees to secure final approval from the facilities to director, the principal, and the director of Parks and Recreation, or as is designee, before making a final payment, and C to ensure that the scope of work is consistent with that approved, seeking approval of the director and the director of Parks and Rec. And also, it continues under A, B, and C, under the highlighted, the facilities director and director of Parks and Recreation, and the principal agree that A, to provide technical assistance regarding the level of insurance required by the vendor, to provide onsite review of work in progress, to review any proposed changes to the scope of work in a timely manner, and to inspect the project upon completion as a requirement for final payment. This being in the memo of understanding. We went over it, unfortunately, because we looked at it at the last minute, we did not have anybody from the Chickahominy Reunion Committee. Joe Cicliano wasn't with us that night, but Bruce Spayman, our superintendent of trees and parks, was with us, and he did present as much information as he knew about the acceptance of the gift, including an enlargement of the drawing that's in the explanatory remarks. However, our committee felt it did have questions to ask of the donors, including if the money had all been raised, who's the contractor, will it cost the town anything at all, and of course, why wasn't it referred to us in the first place? No one on the committee is against the veterans memorial, to the contrary, they're all in favor of the veterans memorial. But because of the confusion over the referral and the lack of the ability to ask some further questions, the vote was 6-4, with districts 4, 5, 6, and 7 voting no, and districts 8 and 10 were absent.
Thank you. Are there any further reports, committee reports, on item 8? Discussion on item number 8? Item 11 now comes before us. Wayne Fox, our town attorney.
I resolve that the sum of $300,000 be in the same as hereby appropriated to be added to account number A140-51400, professional and other special services attorneys.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good. Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item was presented by town attorney Wayne Fox. We've approved several appropriations this year for the law department, due largely to the fact that the department was budgeted below its expected costs, thus ensuring that additional costs would come before the town for approval and review. With this appropriation, the total 708 budget will be 1.65 million. They've served 290 cases, of which 1 million is associated with three major cases, Kempner, Heinlich, and Hardy, in addition to special education cases. The BET determined that it would be best to budget closer to expected costs and increase the '08-'09 budget to 1.255 million. We voted 12-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
The Legislative and Rules Committee considered this on Monday, June 2. Wayne Fox, the town attorney, was there to explain the request. In addition to Ms. Frederick's report, we were told that the budget for 2008-2009 has a condition on it, after $600,000 worth of monies have been spent on outside council fees, the town attorney will need to come back to the BET for authorization for additional funds. On the question of legal order, the committee voted 8-0-2, with districts 2 and 6 absent. One of the abstainers was on the ground that the decision to retain outside council should be made both by the town attorney and other town officials in consultation with the town attorney. On the merits, the committee vote was 9-0-1, with districts 2 and 6 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 11. Item 12 now comes before us. Item twelve now comes before us. John Crary, our Town Comptroller, I'm sorry, Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolve pursuant to State Public Act number ninety-five dash two sixty-eight, an act concerning neighborhood assistance, the programs set out in the explanatory comments attached and complete applications filed in the Town Clerk's Office are hereby approved for the purpose of encouraging business contribution to nonprofit organizations and government agencies providing important services in Greenwich.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item twelve has been moved and seconded. Ms. Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item was presented by John Crary, and further discussion with Princess Urfe to clarify our review of the Neighborhood Assistance Program. The Neighborhood Assistance Program, which requires RTM approval, is state-funded through tax credits to encourage corporate donations to nonprofits, whereas the Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded program funded through HUD. In addition, the Neighborhood Assistance Program has historically been handled out of the First Selectman's Office, while CDBG is handled by Princess Urfe and previously Nancy Brown. The programs funded are quite similar, with their being fewer in the Neighborhood Assistance Program. They are not coordinated, however. It is planned to have much better coordination of the Neighborhood Assistance Program next year. Another key difference is the degree of involvement of the town in these programs. The town basically fulfills an administrative role in the Neighborhood Assistance Program, sending and receiving applications for the state funding between the agencies and the state. CDBG, on the other hand, requires substantial due diligence, monitoring, assessment, and reporting by the town. Of four applications submitted by the town last year, only one was matched and funded. That was a request for one hundred fifty thousand by kids on crisis, in crisis. Ultimately, only ten thousand five hundred was funded by corporations. No municipal funding is involved in this process, with the exception of using its administrative resources. The committee voted twelve zero zero in favor.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the total number, dollar number, in the original call was incorrect. Have all the members received the corrected version of that? The correct, the correct number is seven hundred?
There was no total dollar number in the resolution in the call.
Okay. Okay, it was an attachment, then, I guess. Anyway, the Health and Human Services Committee did take this up with Mr. Crary present. I think Pam has covered the key points. We found it rather odd that a program like this, last year, only had one taker, and apparently they didn't receive all of their, all of the funds that they had requested. But it is, state legislature ruling that we must vote on this to make it effective. There is an amendment that my committee would like to propose at the proper time to the item in the call.
Okay, at the end of the committee report, I will recognize you for that purpose. Is that, is that the conclusion of your report?
Yes.
All right, now's the time to offer the amendment.
If you look at the, at the call on item twelve, after ninety-five dash two sixty-eight, it should be a small a, a minor question, but the major amendment is, after the word "the" programs, cut out, set out in the explanatory comments attached, cut that whole phrase out, and leave the rest of it, so that it would read, let's see, pursuant to State Public Act number ninety-five dash two sixty-eight, an act concerning neighborhood assistance, the programs and complete applications filed in the Town Clerk's Office are hereby approved, and so on.
Okay. That being a motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. We can adopt motions to amend upon unanimous consent. I'll just repeat what it is. It is, the proposed amendment is to change uppercase A in the word "an" in the first line to lowercase a, and to delete the words in the second line following "programs," set out in the explanatory comments, and the first word of the third line attached. Is there any objection to that motion to amend? Hearing none and absent objection, the Health and Human Services Committee motion to amend item twelve is hereby adopted upon unanimous consent. Further discussion on item twelve. Item fifteen is the last of our combined items, that now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? This is item sixteen, I'm, I'm sorry, fifteen. Amy Seibert, are you presenting that resolution? Peter Tessie is our First Selectman, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be in the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the capital account number B three four five dash five nine five six zero dash two eight zero two one, known as Public Works, Board of Education slash Senior Center.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item fifteen has been moved and seconded. Pamela Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item was presented by Alan Manelli, Superintendent of Buildings and Maintenance. Though the smallest of the items, it probably generated the most discussion, given the number of issues associated with it. The Senior Center shares fifty percent of a one hundred fifty thousand appropriation to study the potential for relocation and expansion of services. The Board of Ed was to complete their study upon completion of the seniors' analysis. To date, seventy-one thousand has been spent on a study of potential usage of the Old Town Hall, a survey of needs, and a space plan reflecting those needs. Based upon their surveyed ideal center, it was found that a net twenty-seven thousand square feet were desired, which was lowered to twenty-two thousand by the town. This compares to fourteen thousand square feet in use today, about a fifty-seven percent increase, and the estimated forty-six thousand square feet in Havermeier. The survey also reflected a strong preference to keep the seniors in the central Greenwich area. In addition, consideration would have to be made of the trade-offs of losing certain desired options, such as a fitness center, in order to remain in central Greenwich. As everyone is aware, the Greenwich Arts Center is seeking to lease the Havermeier building. There is no arrangement for this to occur to date, and will be the subject of much discussion, given the Board of Ed has not sought to vacate the building, the seniors have not reviewed the building as an alternative usage in central Greenwich, and other alternative competing interests exist, such as that by the Bruce Museum and the Arts Council, we've been told. This thirty thousand appropriation would be used by the town to complete a spatial study of the Havermeier, to determine whether it is in fact a viable alternative for a senior center, including making it ADA accessible. Clearly, given the excess square footage, there is a possibility of shared space, which cannot be determined until a space, a study is complete. This funding is to allow the town the necessary data to make an informed go/no-go decision on this location's potential usage. The committee's concerns were many. They include a lack of coordination in decision-making, for instance, looking at the whole plan for central Greenwich through the POCD process, which we understand is forthcoming, to determine a clear vision and clear alternatives. Can the two spaces, i.e. Old Town Hall and Havermeier, be shared jointly between the seniors and the Board of Ed, given the move of non-critical Board of Ed functions, such as storage, out of the central business district? And similarly, can space be shared among and between perhaps the seniors and other interested groups? In the end, the committee voted in favor of this item, because it was felt that, as the only town department with an interest in the Havermeier, this study was necessary to allow the town to determine where it is, whether it is a viable alternative for its needs. However, while there were ten in favor and one opposed, many were still very concerned that without the Board of Ed decision to vacate the building, this analysis was putting the cart before the horse, and therefore, a potential waste of funds. Further, there was a great concern of the lack of coordinate, integration of all needs, and making a single, well-planned decision for all involved parties. The resources to use for this fund, of these funds, will be helpful, in any case, in providing the town with the answers to questions about the viability of converting the Havermeier for alternative uses. We voted ten one one in support of the item, and, let's see if I have it here. District ten was opposed, and District eight abstained.
Thank you. Jerry Isaacson, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This item was not referred to Health and Human Services, but we decided that since it dealt with Commission on Aging, that we would take it up. As someone once said not long ago, that it's fun to follow Pam, because she's so thorough in her report, so I won't repeat, except to emphasize that I think a number of us on the committee felt that this study, while Sam Dibler is footing the bill, it really is going to have, be helpful to other entities in town that may want to use the Havermeier building. Our vote was ten one zero. District four was absent, District eleven voted no, because he felt that all interested parties in the Havermeier building should list their needs, so that the study could look at alternatives.
Thank you. David Melick, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Very, very well reported by the prior committees. We voted twelve zero zero. Alan Manelli went through a number of details on the reasons why we would need the additional funding, and ultimately, it's to help us make a good decision when a decision comes before us. Again, twelve zero zero. Thank you.
And Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee took up this item. It was presented to us by our First Selectman, Peter Tessie, who was substituting for Alan Manelli, who was busy with the other committees from whom you've already heard. This thirty thousand dollars will fund the third of three studies intended to provide the town with the information it needs in order to resolve the long-running puzzle of who goes where in the public buildings in the center of our downtown business district. The first of those studies has already been completed. It addressed the needs of the Senior Center and made recommendations that would expand on the programming the Senior Center now offers, and require more space than is available in the Old Town Hall, where it is now located. It is acknowledged by the Senior Center itself that not all of the new program may be possible due to space and budgetary constraints. The second study is now underway with previously appropriated funds. It is examining the Board of Education's central office requirements. The study will consider possible sites for the various functions now housed at the Havermeier building, all of which need not remain under the same roof. Possible sites for these various functions include the Old Town Hall, leased facilities, space in existing schools, newly constructed facilities, and the Havermeier building. The thirty thousand dollar appropriation that we're considering this evening would be used to determine if the Senior Center program, or some part of it, can be fitted into the Havermeier building. An affirmative conclusion may require some refinement in the Senior Center program. The study may conclude that there's space left over that could be made available for other applications. Only if these studies, plural, determine that the Havermeier building cannot be used to meet the needs of the Senior Center and/or the Board of Education, would it be available for lease to the group that wishes to convert it to an art center or to another lessee. Although it has been less vocal, Mr. Tessie indicated that the Bruce Museum also has an interest in the building. Our vote was twelve in favor, none opposed, with no abstentions.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to report on the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items five, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen. Those in favor, one seventy-seven, opposed, two, abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. Back to the pending item, number fifteen, discussion on item fifteen. Christine Edwards, District eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, colleagues, selectmen. I rise to divide this particular issue, and the reason that I'm setting this forth, to divide this from the combined, is to have a separate standalone vote on this, and this is the reason. It may be that it will pass, but on the other hand, I want you to really think about the fact that we have the second part of the study for the Board of Ed in process right now. I'm enough of a designer to understand that if we're looking at load-bearing walls, anyone who's done any renovation has known, you've taken down a wall and put up a steel beam, it's done all the time, I've done it myself. In terms of design, once the Board of Ed decides whether this is a building for them to use, or as their storage may be sent away to Iron Mountain or to a more appropriate place, and therefore, more square footage becomes available for their programs, and also other programs, only then can we really see how much space is going to be available. We may even decide that it's appropriate to finish the original structure at the top of the building. Those of you who've seen the stairway to nowhere know that, I think it was Commander Benedict said, gee, we can't build that top floor, because I can't see the flags for my boat. So it might be that we even want to continue and build a third floor, and expand those skylights and other items on the top, but we really feel, here, I feel at least, is taking thirty thousand dollars that could pay for one teaching assistant for the year, and spending that money ahead of finishing the studies that should be done right now. At the end of the day, when the Board of Ed makes its appropriate decision, then we know how much space is available potentially to put the Senior Center or other uses into play. But to do this at this time, I feel is taking, at a time we're looking at fiscal responsibility, spending thirty thousand dollars that can be used in other ways, instead of using this before the Board of Ed has finished its program. Thank you.
So you are moving to divide item fifteen from the combined items?
Right, because if we all vote yes, yes, that's it.
So that motion, is there a second? It now has been moved and seconded to divide item fifteen, which, if adopted, would have the effect of taking it out from the combined items, and it would then go into line with the separate items. That motion to divide is not debatable. It requires a majority to pass. I will call for a voice vote, this being a procedural matter. So if you want to take item fifteen out and take it up separately, you should vote in favor. If you want to leave it where it is, you should vote no. Well, let's see how this goes. All those in favor of the motion to divide, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
You may call for a recorded vote. All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Edwards' motion to divide item fifteen, please proceed. Now we're going to have to get the results of this. Actually, well, I think we're going to be stuck with a recorded vote, so let us finish If anyone would care to offer comments on item fifteen, you could do that now, while we wait for the results of this vote. Further discussion on item fifteen. Seeing no interested speakers, we will await the result of the vote before proceeding further. of District 8, with one of the largest districts. And the most social district, District 7, is still discussing things. Yeah, I didn't think it was as lopsided as the volume may have indicated. I think that was because Mr. Didakis was on the no side. Those in favor, 90. Opposed, 94. Abstaining, abstaining 3. That motion has failed. Further discussion on the, on Item 15. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined items, numbers 8, 11, 12, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will continue. The next item to come before us is the first of the combined items. That is Item Number 2. Item Number 2 was postponed from our April meeting. It is the appointment of members of the Greenwich High School Musical Instructional Space and Auditorium Building Committee. So that is now presently before us. May we have the committee reports on Item Number 2? Mary Jacobson with the report of the Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members and guests. The Education Committee met last Monday to consider Item 2, Greenwich High School Building Committee's substitute resolution postponed to June from April. We took no further action from the April vote, which stands. Our vote at that time was 11, 0, 0, with District 1 absent for six of the candidates other than Steve Leparco. He met separately with us. The vote for him was 9, 1, 0, with District 2 and 12 absent. The dissenting vote was from District 10, who questioned the strength of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met on March 24th. We met before that, one week before that, to interview, excuse me, one of the members, Mr. Brady, and we met on the 24th, and we interviewed Ms. Crowe, Mr. Leparco, Mr. Napolitano, Ms. Cooper, and Mr. Ross. We voted on the, those, that group, 9 to 1. Nine in favor, two against, Districts 2 and 10 against, and District 1 abstained. The reasons were that there was a predomination of, one of the members thought of the board, people with affiliations to the Board of Education, which they felt was a little unbalanced. And the other member was afraid that there was not enough balance in the, in the building committee with, on some of the matters of technical interest such as acoustics. We then met a week on April 18th, almost a month later, to interview Mr. Christ, who was part of this board, excuse me, building committee. We voted on him 12, 0, 0. We gave a pretty full report last time in April meeting on his credentials. We then voted to combine all of those as one as a slate and put them to four before you. I think that answers all the questions. Mr. Christ, who is an architect, satisfied some of the concerns for a specialty in that area on the building committee to help give it more breadth of expertise, and I think that satisfied some of the concerns in the original vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Will the, Mr. Melick, District 8.
Very briefly, I would like to thank those who are proposed for the slate of the building committee. It's a lot of work. From the public work side, we recognize that. We thank the professionals for offering themselves in some respects for torture, but it is all for the public good. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 2. Mark. Mark Pruner, District 10.
I rise reluctantly in favor in this group. As you know, our district has concerns about the composition of the committee. The building committees by far spend the most money of any non-recurring items. They spend in the tens of millions of dollars. This committee will be looking at a concept that was estimated at $25 million. For anything that's not on the CIP process presently, it's going to push out important items that we need to do. I would counsel these members to be careful with the town money. If they can come in at less than this, then there are other Board of Education items that can be done. So, and I also think that we ought to be able in the future to vote on these members individually so we get a better balance on the committee. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 2. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number 2, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item Number 3 now comes before us. Who is presenting that resolution? Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item Number 3. Resolved to adopt an ordinance pursuant to Public Act 07-170, approved on June 29, 2007, as presented in the call.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this item, beginning with our Finance Committee, Pam Frederick.
Okay, I didn't want to mess up Paul's work. Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item was presented to the Finance Committee by Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney of the Law Department. Well received, I understand that there might be further discussion on this after the committee reports. This ordinance was put in place to assist municipalities in reverting to the pre-2003 practice of allowing non-delinquent taxes owed on real estate transfer to a land trust to be forgiven and viewed as exempt. This corrected a Supreme Court decision that these taxes would not be excused. Our primary concerns was to, were to, receive assurance that this language would not allow any deferral of delinquent taxes, that it is in fact limited to nonprofit land trust or land conservation entities, and not available to all nonprofits. We were also concerned with the possible revenue implications and wanted to ensure that it did not negatively impact the recent approved budget. We were given that assurance and informed that it has relatively minor revenue impact with approximately $6,700 per year, and since 2001, a total of $40,292. Land trusts seeking this exemption must apply to the tax assessor's office. The opposing vote, our vote was 10, 1, 0 in favor, with the opposing vote believing that it was cleaner to have these taxes continued to be due and payable. In this case, the vote again was 10, 1, 0 in favor, District 2 opposed, and District 6 absent.
Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee took up this item at our meeting last Monday evening. We were assisted by Amina Ahmad of the Town Attorney's Office and representatives of the Greenwich Land Trust. As explained by Ms. Frederick, this ordinance is proposed pursuant to state-enabling legislation which would permit the town to follow a practice that it had, together with other towns in Connecticut, which it had followed before a state Supreme Court case disallowed that practice. What the ordinance does is provide that property tax that becomes payable after transfer of title to a qualifying nonprofit land conservation organization is abated. As a result, a donor contributing property to a qualifying organization gets two tax benefits. The first is the federal tax deduction that we all get when we make contributions to qualifying charities, and the second is the abatement of land, local tax, local property taxes which are not yet due. Both of these benefits constitute incentives to the donor to contribute land to a land conservation organize, organization, and thereby to preserve it. The proposed ordinance contains language that makes explicit an important point which is implicit in the state-enabling legislation, namely that property taxes that had been become payable before the date of transfer and are thus delinquent are not abated. In our consideration of this item, we were aware that the Legislative and Rules Committee, who you have yet to hear from, had voted to postpone action on the item to enable it to make improvements in the language. While members of our committee acknowledged the language, that language can always be improved, we felt the language was sufficiently clear, that it did not appear to be susceptible of an interpretation different from that which was intended, and that it was undesirable to delay action past the date, which is July 1, when property taxes next become payable. Accordingly, we voted 11 in favor, one opposed, with one abstention for this item. The abstention was from District 1, who was undecided due to the Legislative and Rules Committee's concerns about language.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Vice Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
The Legislative and Rules Committee took up this matter at our meeting on Monday. We were assisted by Amina Ahmad of the Law Department. Additionally, Ms. Jane Hogeman of the Greenwich Land Trust and Ms. Virginia Gwynn of the Greenwich Land Trust were present to answer questions. The two previous committee reports have covered a fair amount of detail, and I will only address matters that we talked about in our committee. We went into a great deal of detail in trying to understand the issues that had been raised in the Connecticut Supreme Court decision and how they affected Greenwich. The, Ms. Hogeman had explained that the Connecticut Supreme Court was addressing very complex and confusing tax statutes and two separate operating calendars. One was the calendar for tax assessors who operated from October to September. The other calendar was for the tax collectors who operate on the calendar from July to June. In its decision, the Supreme Court noted that when the Connecticut Legislature intended to abate taxes, it knew the language to use because it had abated taxes on many operations, including dairy farms, fruit orchards, wine grape vineyards, some certain manufacturing plants, historic amusement theme parks, contaminated real property undergoing remediation, and a host of others. The language that was applicable to land trusts was not the same as used in other abatement statutes, and therefore the court held that the abatements did not apply, but gave instructions to the Legislature in the way that it could correct the omission, and the Legislature did adopt legislation last June. However, members of our committee were not convinced that the Supreme Court's decision dealt with the system in place in Greenwich. That court, that case involved Danbury, a number of our committee members with the view that the sequence of events described by the court were different from those in Greenwich. Others pointed out that taxes are not fixed in October, but are only fixed after going through an appeal process and the setting of the mill rate. Others, members had difficulty understanding the chronology of taxing and payment. And finally, those who thought they knew how the system worked were of the view that the language of the proposed ordinance did not achieve its stated purpose. We asked, we, members of the Greenwich Land Trust, whether delay would affect any transactions that they had pending, and we were told that there were no transactions pending that would be affected by delay until our next meeting. I also note that the ordinance does not apply just to land trusts, but to nonprofit land conservation organizations, which would include not only the Greenwich Land Trust, but the Boy Scouts, the National Audubon Society, and other organizations named in the Explanos. Since we were not convinced that we knew how the taxing system worked, we were not convinced that the language worked the way it was intended, the committee voted to make a motion to refer the matter back to the Legislative and Rules Committee by a vote of 11, 0, 0, with District 2 absent. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I'll make that motion.
You are recognized to do that.
The Legislative and Rules Committee moves to refer Item 3 on the June 2008 call back to the Legislative and Rules Committee, which will work with the Town Attorney to clarify the language of the ordinance.
That motion to refer being offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second, and it is now currently before us. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to refer Item Number 3 back to itself. Since this is a procedural matter, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of referring it back, Item 3 back to Legislative and Rules, you should vote in favor. If you want to continue taking this up and disposing of this tonight, you should vote against the motion. All those in favor of the motion to refer Item 3 to the Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. That motion has carried, and Item 3 is now referred to our Legislative and Rules Committee. Before proceeding to the next item, which will be Item Number 6... Before proceeding to the next item, which will be item number 6, I would like to report the results of the two votes that we have taken and not yet announced. The vote on the combined items, those were items 8, 11, 12, and 15. Those in favor, 151; opposed, 31; abstaining, 4. The combined items have carried. I also have the result of the vote on item number 2, which was the appointment of the Building Committee for the high school auditorium. Those in favor, 151; opposed, 26; abstaining, 8. That item has carried. The next of our combined items, I'm sorry, the next of our separate item now comes before us, it is item number 6, Dr. Susan Wallerstein of the Greenwich Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. This is a substitute resolution, resolved that the sum of $500,000 be and is the same is hereby appropriated from the general fund balance to various accounts as listed in the call.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item number 6 has been moved and seconded. Bob Brady with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening again. We met on this last Monday. Rick Calcavecchio is the Finance Director for the Board of Ed. Dr. Wallerstein and Steve Anderson, member of the Board of Education, were there to assist. This is a half a million, $500,000 interim appropriation to the Board of Ed operating budget for this fiscal year. Our vote was 11, 0, 0 to recommend. At April 30, the Board of Ed estimated its June 30 budget balance. Including the costs of moving the children out of the modulators, the year-end balance was estimated to be in deficit of $48,000 and change. However, based on the confidence in the individual components of this amount, the Board of Ed believes the year-end balance could be between, a worst-case, $560,000 deficit, and a best-case, $462,000 surplus. The analysis of this is in the Explanos, and the range, the half a million dollars, represents approximately 1.7% of the fourth quarter spending of the Board of Ed. It's got $120 million budget, half a percent is, in this case, in the vicinity of, or $500,000 is in the vicinity of much less than half a percent. In order to have sufficient funds available to meet its obligations, the Board of Ed is asking for an additional $500,000 to complete the year. Any money not spent remains in the general fund, and it is not carried forward into 2009. It remains with the town. The Board of Ed has the authority to allocate money among its various operating accounts and would presumably do so to meet the needs. Incidentally, the cost associated with moving the children out of the modulators and distributing them among the other elementary schools, the busing, the transportation, et cetera, was estimated to be between $400,000 and $490,000, approximately what they're asking for. Again, our vote was 11, 0, 0 to recommend approval of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good to follow, I see. For this item, Mr. Moderator, members and guests, it was presented by Nancy Weisler and Sue Wallerstein. Nancy reviewed the Board of Ed's budget forecasts of material variances, and Bob has explained that in good detail, so I won't repeat it. I will note that the Board does intend to pursue the contractor for damages associated with the faulty construction, including this additional cost that we faced for the move. Were it not for this additional cost for Hamilton Avenue, the Board of Ed would have come within $48,000 of its $120 million budget, which is very well done. The money associated with this move includes cost of contractors, consultants, environmental testing, staff additions, transportation, cleaning, and assessment costs. Our vote was 11, 1, 0 in favor, with the opposing vote concerned that this contingency amount was overly large and that the Board should keep to its original budgeted limit. District 10 was opposed.
Thank you. Discussion on item 6. Mr. Butell, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, rather than rising to a point of information, I'll ask my question, Mr. Moderator, through you, to the appropriate individual. There was, in District 8, there was a lot of discussion of not quite understanding what all this money is for. I understand within the Board of Ed budget, money is somewhat fungible. As we went through the accounts that were listed in the call, they didn't quite line up with what was in the Explanos. That was our confusion. So my question, Mr. Moderator, we were offered a substitute resolution that referenced the accounts listed in the call. I assume that means that the items listed in the old resolution carry over to the new resolution. In other words, if you're offering a substitute resolution, the existing resolution disappears.
The resolution that appeared in the call has been replaced by this substitute.
Right, but the substitute resolution references what was in the call and is no longer there. So I am simply trying to clarify that the new resolution-
All right, I see what you're saying, yes.
Includes these account explanations as well. Just so I know what we're voting on.
Well, I take it your point is, more properly, the substitute should say "to the accounts listed below." Okay. All right. The question is, could someone please explain the difference between what was in our call and what is in the substitute resolution?
The difference between the substitute resolution and the original resolution in the call, there is no change to the list of accounts to which the $500,000 would be appropriated. The change is to clarify and actually correct a misstatement in the original resolution, which indicated that these were the specific accounts associated with the Hamilton Avenue school relocation, as opposed to a choice of accounts that had been determined based on aggregate expenditures within major object codes.
All right. Could you, Dr. Wallerstein, if you could just verify, as I look at the language as I'm comparing the two so that we're clear, it appears the only change in the call, it said the money is hereby appropriated from the general fund balance, and then it said "to the Board of Education accounts," there was that phrase, "to the Board of Education accounts," and then it said "for costs associated," et cetera. It appears to me the only change was to take out that phrase "to the Board of Education accounts" and replace it with "to various accounts as listed in the call." Is that correct?
In the version of the call that I have in the Explanos, the phrase that is eliminated is "for costs associated with the Hamilton Avenue school relocation," replacing it by "to various accounts as listed in the call."
Oh, all right.
The accounts themselves do not change.
So the phrase "for costs associated with the Hamilton Avenue school relocation" is no longer in the substitute?
Correct. While that is the variable that is the driver for the need for the money, there is not a one-to-one correlation between costs associated with Hamilton Avenue and the specific accounts listed in the call. And that was helpfully pointed out in committee meetings, which is why we sought to the substitute resolution.
All right. So, I mean, I was handed something that was cut, literally cut and pasted, so, just so that I am aware of. Does the substitute resolution also list the accounts?
Yes.
Okay. So what was taken out was after the words "general fund balance," take out "to the Board of Education accounts for costs associated with the Hamilton Avenue school relocation," and replace it with "to various accounts as listed in the call."
Correct.
And so, no change to those accounts or the dollars?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion on item 6. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 6, and proceed to poll your delegation? The next separate item to come before us is item number 7. Frank Maza, Chairman of the Hamilton Avenue Building Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, resolved that the sum of $200,000 is hereby appropriated and added to the following Board of Education account, Z68017925955025110 for the Hamilton Avenue school reconstruction. Said appropriations have come from the Capital and Nonrecurring Fund.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 7 has been moved and seconded. Bob Brady with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening once again. This is a $200,000 appropriation to the Hamilton Avenue School Building Committee. Mr. Maza assisted us. Our vote was 11, 0, 0 to recommend. We also had Steve Anderson of the Board of Ed available to assist. Mr. Maza reported that the building is nearly complete. Ceilings have been installed, flooring is nearly complete, furniture is being moved in, kitchen tiles are being installed, and kitchen equipment is ready for hookup. Inspections are being performed, and the Building Committee expects to obtain temporary COs during this month, June, as parts of the building are completed. The Building Committee expects to achieve, quote, "substantial completion," close quote, "in June, but punch list items will continue to be worked on into July and final wrap-up in August." Mr. Maza said the Building Committee needed the additional money for three reasons. First, the architect has had to do more work responding to contractor questions and approving completed work than was planned when they were last here, I guess in January, for a last interim. And these questions, the questions of the contractor, require answers, otherwise the contractor stops work. The Building Committee will continue to need them, the architect, into July. Second, the project manager will be needed into August to oversee the completion of the work. And finally, the Building Committee does expect some additional change orders to be submitted by the contractor in order to complete the work. The Building Committee believes that $200,000 is more than sufficient to complete the job, but it is asking for it to ensure that the project is not further delayed in the event of any unforeseen adverse events. We also discussed the modular rehab project and the two projects' effect on the Glenville project. The modular project is moving forward, and Dr. Wallerstein said she would provide weekly status reports to the Education Committee. The Board of Ed expects to decide at its June 19 board meeting whether to turn the Glenville school over to its Building Committee, and that decision will be based upon its assessment of the project's progress with Hamilton Avenue and the risks associated with it not being complete. Presently, it appears to be that the building will be complete, and Mr. Anderson, speaking for himself, not for the Board, indicated that they would probably, at June 19, turn that over to them. However, he indicated that if Hamilton Avenue Building Committee did not have sufficient funds to complete, or would be at risk of not having sufficient funds, that was a risk that the Board of Ed would not take, in all likelihood, and therefore, it would not turn the Glenville over to the Building Committee because it felt that it would need that building in the event of delays at Hamilton Avenue that would keep it from being opened by August 24th for the kids. We are over a barrel, but our vote on this, after considerable discussion, was 11, 0, 0 to recommend approval of this item. District 3 was not present. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
This might be his. Okay. Mr. Moderator, members and guests, this item was presented to the Finance Committee by Frank Maza, the Building Committee Chair. This has been a difficult project for all involved, including the Building Committee. Their primary difficulty seems to have originated from the decision to manage this with a general contractor who has complete control of the project. This has been corrected for the Glenville project, which will use a project manager. The other major difficulty has been the poor staffing of this project by the general contractor, Worth, who is now working on its fourth project manager and its second supervisor. This, along with their difficulty, difficult relationship with the architect, have led to a tremendous number of conflicts and ultimately what is before us today, ongoing change orders. Finally, the contingency for this project was noted as being only 3% compared to 10% of construction costs. That is more typical of a project of this scale. 25% of the original $800,000 contingency was used to excavate rock associated with the garage. You may all recall that item coming before us. As Frank highlighted, including this appropriation, if approved, for Phase 1 and Phase 2, it is important to note that a total of $2.1 million will have been appropriated for contingency, bringing it in line with the $2.2 million normal for a project of this type. We'll cover what Bob covered. This is a critical path item, and though there are no parties happy with the way it is proceeded, we voted in favor of the item to ensure that all of the school's plans can proceed as scheduled without undue delay, including the Building Committee relinquishing Hamilton Avenue to the Board of Ed so that Glenville School can vacate and begin its construction as scheduled in the fall. Again, this funding will require the approval and release of the BET. The committee voted 12, 0, 0 in favor.
Thank you. David Melick, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
We picked this item up when we were discussing the other items assigned to the committee. President Amy Seabert and Alan Minelli, but they actually decided to leave at this point. It was not referred to the Public Works Committee, but there was a clear majority interest to discuss the issue and also to vote. We made a number of observations during our discussions. We had apparently all received a letter from the Building Committee requesting the additional funds, giving some explanation as to the need as discussed by the prior reports. One of the concerns was that it was specifically a current item that would be appropriating money without specific knowledge of truly where it was to be used within Hamilton Avenue. On a positive note, it does appear that the BET has just established a conditioning aspect to the request. Most members felt that there was no reason a special meeting for the RTM could not be held during the summer months. I think, given how we're going in here tonight, now we may have changed our mind. Anyway, but let us remember, this project was poorly budgeted from the beginning. The rushed pace at which the administrations forced the development of the project, partly by necessity, put the Building Committee, the Building Committee behind the eight ball, because that's what they were given, and then they had been working mightily against many embedded roadblocks, the contracts, for example, the structure of the program, some indecision as to what we could do with the school architecturally, et cetera, and another roadblock, of course, was bedrock. One note that Mr. Maza has made very clear is that he was short-changed, the Building Committee was short-changed on the contingent side, contingency side, from the beginning of the project. And last, the last appropriation in January for $550,000 did include $133,000 for contingency at that time. This isn't January '07, we're talking January '08. So that contingency is gone, and now we're actually asking for more contingency. I think the Public Works Committee reflected a disappointment and that the well is dry and there is no more. We voted 0, 10, 2, with Districts 3 and 6 abstaining. To be fair, we did take this up on our own. We did not invite anybody. They were busy with finance and education. But we did take it on face value, and I guess it just reflects a frustration within the committee. But Districts 3 and 6 made a very fair point. They were uncomfortable that nobody was present to actually go through this with the committee. Maybe we got ahead of ourselves. And it is a fair position and clearly increases- Maybe we got ahead of ourselves, and it is a fair position and clearly increases the value that we should place on the other Committee's reports. That being said, however, it is clear that Hamilton Avenue must be finished now, if not last week, so we should proceed with Glenville. Thank you.[613.32][613.32](APPLAUSE).
All right. I think, before I call for discussion, I do think it appropriate just to comment on procedure. We have a committee structure that is designed to work in tandem with our Freedom of Information law, which gives notice to the public as to what we are doing, and they can have some confidence that they know where to go so that they can have input into decisions being made by public bodies. I will just read responsibility from our RTM Rules Appendix. This is Part D2, Responsibility of Committees, Paragraph K. In fulfillment of responsibilities, a committee chairman should invite a department spokesman or organization representative to scheduled meetings to provide information and respond to any questions of the members. So I take it very seriously that we comply with that. It's, I don't think, fair to give a report that's not based on full discussion of all sides, and there's other language in our rules about making sure that all sides are represented. So I just throw that out as a reminder to all of our committees, and I just remind you, you see committees taking items up that, committees that the item was not referred to. That is within the authority of a committee to do, but there is then a corresponding responsibility to give notice to all interested parties that that is the intent. So I just remind all of our committee and district leaders if that applies.[726.57][726.57](APPLAUSE). All right. At this point, I will now call for discussion on item number seven. Mr. Cavie, for what purpose do you rise? Please state your point of information.[741.57][741.57](APPLAUSE). Well, Mr. Cavie, the point of information, which I don't think that was a point of information. I think that was a point of debate. The statement made was when a committee, or are you just asking for advice? I, the question is, what if there's no advance warning that the committee will take up the item? I think the answer is, we have to do our best to think ahead. We are always criticizing others for not thinking ahead and planning in advance, so we know what items are on the agenda, we know where they've been referred. I think we have the ability to communicate among ourselves, and it really is our responsibility to do that advanced planning and notice, and particularly when some of the interested parties were actually at the meeting but were allowed to leave prior to taking it up. In this particular instance, I think, you know, then there's no, that, what you raised doesn't apply to this particular case. Okay. So, I mean, I just think we need to do a little advance, give some thought and make arrangements in advance. All right. We are now at discussion on item number seven. I did, I was given some names of interested speakers, so Dawn Nethercot. If it's a group, please, all three, all right, Dawn Nethercot, Rose Ferrano, and Alex Capoza. Who are representatives of the Hamilton Avenue PTA.
Good evening, members of the RTM. My name is Dawn Nethercot, and with me is Rose Ferrano. We are the PTA co-presidents of Hamilton Avenue School. Also beside us is Alex Capoza, who is the VP of Multicultural Liaison, who represents our Hispanic community within our school. On behalf of the parents, students, and staff of this school community, it is imperative that the new construction at 184 Hamilton Avenue School is complete by the start of 2008-2009 school year. With your vote, it guarantees this community the $200,000 appropriation, which may be needed for the additional expenses to complete this job. We are striving for continued support in this long-awaited dilemma and a finished product for the start of the new school year. We can't have any more setbacks nor second thoughts. We have sacrificed a great deal through the years, and now it comes down to tonight. Most importantly, the Hamilton Avenue School neighborhood children depend on all of you to make the right choice on their behalf. They want to be together. Parents need to work as a team, as a PTA, to make sure our kids get all the opportunities available as other schools. Our staff needs to be under one roof for successful communication amongst its surroundings. This year has been a challenge for all of us, especially our host communities, as our kids were placed in six different schools. We've managed, but our Hamilton Avenue School family is lost in transition. The next school year, our goal, our community, will be reunited. We are confident you will vote to have us reunited in our brand-new facility at 184 Hamilton Avenue. In life, nothing is easy, but when it comes to children and/or their education, we make sacrifices, and this is a good sacrifice.[982.75][982.75](APPLAUSE).
My name is Alex Capoza. I'm here not only as a PTA representative, but I'm also as a parent. As I stand behind my co-presidents and the entire PTA from Hamilton Avenue, which has done a tremendous amount of work trying to deal with what we have been faced with and all the challenges, all the changes, all the moving, all the relocations, I have to say, as a parent, think about this decision. We are so close. We are so close to reach this impossible dream, if you may want to call it. Ten months ago, we should have been in that school. Our children should have been home. As much as we have appreciated every single host school who embraced us in the time of need, and I personally, my child is in Parkway, I can't thank them enough for what they have done, and I hear that from all the parents, how Glenville, Cosco, North Street, all the schools that have been our hosts, they have really, really embraced us, but you know what? Our children's wants to be home. This is too close not to give them to them. They have deserved it. They worked so hard for it. They have been exposed to what a real school looks like, a real cafeteria, a real gym, and they can't wait for this. Do not take this away from the children. It's not about the parents, it's about them, and I really, really wanted to think about it and give them what they deserve and what they have waiting for, and it is, like Dorothy, to go home. Thank you.[1087.77][1087.77](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Further discussion on item seven.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I think what concerns me is the tone of some of the communications we got in light of this project. I think the frustration to the last speakers that you hear amongst a lot of the RTM members is, we agree with you that you should have been there 10 months ago, and to have the Building Committee, a letter was sent out to us, now coming and saying, let me step back and remind you, when we voted the last appropriation on this, I pointed the finger here and said, yes, we were partially to blame, but now at the 11th hour to say, well, we never had the contingency we wanted. When I read that letter, I was shocked. I was shocked that it was, not until the end, that it basically said, well, we've done this and this and this and this, and other than the fact that we're two years late, everything's great. The tone of the letter, I expressed to school administrators, I'm going to say my anger at the tone of the letter, and it's, it's not, it's not what you're hearing me say. My concern with the tone of that letter is that it's not 180 degrees from what it should have been. It should have been a letter stating this is going to be a new magnet school. It should have been a letter saying, we want to complete a school that is going to be the top school in Greenwich until the next-
Commission for a term expiring 3/31/11, Paul S. Marchesi. Item number 10, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/11, Frank Farraker.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the two resolutions? The resolutions on item nine and 10 have been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on these, beginning with Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use
I'm going to report on both of these items together because the Committee acted on them together. Because of a communications glitch between the Selectmen's Office and the two nominees, Messrs. Marchesi and Farraker, neither was aware of that his appointment was on the call for this evening's meeting, when I called him last Wednesday, the Wednesday before the Land Use Committee meeting to arrange the appearance, their appearance at our meeting. Both of them unfortunately had conflicts last Monday evening, one of them because he was traveling outside the country on that date. Both could have met with the Committee this evening before our meeting, before the Fulltown meeting began, but a majority of our Committee felt that our interviews of nominees for so important a position as Member of the Planning and Zoning Commission should not be constrained by having to conclude at a fixed hour, which would have been the case had we tried to interview them ahead of this meeting. I might note that six of our 12 members are new to the Committee this year. I would also indicate that two of our members are former members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Both of those were in the majority in the vote that we took, which was seven in favor, five opposed, to move this evening that these items be postponed to the September meeting. And I would just, again, note parenthetically that the effect of postponing it would have these two individuals, both of whom are currently members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, remain as members until we act on their appointments at the, either tonight or at the September meeting if our motion to postpone is carried. So I will make that motion at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Appointments Committee met on April 8th to interview Mr. Marchesi and Mr. Farraker. Is the intention to take these together as a combined item?
We are, we are considering them together, given the fact that I know there is a motion to postpone-
Thank you.
-the two of them.
We interviewed Mr. Marchesi, both members, we had some length. As the Chairman of the Land Use Committee said, these are important positions in our town. This is a reappointment, as some of you may know. We voted for Mr. Marchesi, 12-0-0. We're extremely impressed with his ideas on residential zoning and how to deal with the problem of upgrading the FAR so as to control some of the large outgrowth and the, and overgrowth in the residential areas. We had a particular discussion with both candidates about impermeable surface and the problem of flooding and running off, runoff from the aggregate, some would say, overdevelopment of our properties in town, our lots, and the impermeable surface. Mr. Marchesi had a lot of discussion about that, a lot of ideas that he wanted to affect in the planning and zoning as possible, new ways of dealing with it. We then interviewed Mr. Farraker, again, at some length. Mr. Farraker, we voted 11-0-1, one abstention. I can't recall the district, I believe it was two, being a couple of months ago, forgive me. While we voted 11-0-1, there was, after our vote, a cause on a discussion on another matter, a statement by the voting members for Mr. Farraker that said that they were somewhat reluctant and they wished this to be reported. So as Chairman, I will. They were disturbed because he seemed to give an over-concentration on the commercial districts in town, and he omitted really any discussion on the residential areas, which concerned many of the delegates, and that gave them concern about his, how should I say, focus and attachment to protecting the residential areas. The vote was 11-0-1. I won't go any further because I know there's a motion to postpone, which I'm sure in general deference to the Committees will be carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blumer?
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Land Use Committee, I move that Items Nine and 10 be postponed to our September meeting.
Thank you. That being a motion on behalf of one of our Committees, it does not require a second. If you are in favor of putting off the appointment of Messrs. Farraker and Marchesi to our September meeting, you should vote in favor of this motion. If you want to continue tonight, considering them, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion to postpone Items Nine and 10 to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. The last item to come before us is item number 17, Despina Foseliotis, with that resolution. And while Ms. Foseliotis is coming forward, I have the result of the vote on item number seven, which is the appropriation of $200,000 for the Hamilton Avenue Reconstruction. Those in favor, 151. Opposed, 27 abstaining, I'm sorry, wait a minute, yes, 27 abstaining, six. That item has carried.[1583.15][1583.15](APPLAUSE).
Resolve that the RTM authorizes the acceptance of donations of cash and in-kind gifts for the 75th anniversary celebration, up to a total value of $500 per individual donation, and the cash gifts shall become appropriations that the controller may add to the appropriate accounts which may be used along with the in-kind gifts by the RTM's 75th Anniversary Celebration Committee.
Thank you, and that's a substitute resolution, correct?
Yes.
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? Substitute resolution on item 17 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Bergweger with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, we took this matter up at our Monday meeting. All districts except Districts Two and Six were present. We were helped or assisted by Joan Caldwell and Wayne Fox. Mr. Fox had looked into the question whether these donations might constitute ethical violations, and he received an opinion from the State Ethics Commission that the donations were proper. On the legal order of the substitute resolution, the vote was 10-0-0 with Districts Two and Six absent. On the merits of the substitute resolution, the vote was 10-0-0 with Districts Two and Six absent.
Thank you. Dr. Evan Delman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Ms. Foseliotis was with us on Tuesday night. She explained the party that's going to happen on October 19th. The Anniversary Committee was given a $4,000 seed funding and must raise the rest. If an individual or corporation wanted to give funding or food items in excess of the $500, it would not be possible with the resolution before it was passed. District 11 proposed a substitute resolution that removed the words "up to a total value of $500 per individual donation." That amendment passed 6-2-0 with Districts 1, 2, 8, and 10 absent. The two no votes were concerned that by removing the cap, it would not be within legal order. We then voted on the amended resolution, and that was 7-1-0. Again, the one no vote was concerned that it would not be in legal order. I spoke with Town Attorney Fox today. He assured me that it is within legal order, so it is good to go if you want.
All right. That being the last Committee report, would you like to offer your amendment?
Okay. On behalf of the Town Services, we wish to remove the words "up to a total value of $500 per individual donation."
That being offered on behalf of a Committee does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Messers, District Six.
(INAUDIBLE) one person, all the committee members.
Well, first of all, what we're discussing is taking out the cap. All right. Are you in favor or opposed to taking out any cap? So there would be no cap whatsoever?
So there would be no cap whatsoever. That's what we're currently considering. So if we take it out- All right. We could, we could then discuss that. If this is defeated, then we could come back to your point. Further discussion on the Town Services proposed motion to amend. All right. Did the Anniversary Committee have any thoughts on this? Ms. Foseliotis?
I applaud the enthusiasm of the members of Town Services, which represents the body's positive feedback to our 75th Anniversary Celebration Committee. However, after consulting with my committee, I believe that the $500 cap should remain as it would reflect the wording of what we received from the legal department initially and would satisfy our needs. So it would be perfectly okay. We're in good shape.
Thank you. I will just say, my concern was if we take the cap off, there are, there are interests or groups that have matters that may be coming before us, and I'm not sure it's appropriate to invite large donations for what is really a modest celebration. So, you know, I, those were my thoughts when I heard about this proposed amendment. Further discussion on the proposed amendment of Item 17? All right, I'm going to call for a voice vote on this. We'll see how that goes. If you are in favor of removing, this is the motion to amend, by deleting the proposed cap on donations. If you are in favor of taking it out so there's no cap, you should vote yes. If you want to leave it as is, you should vote no. All those in favor of the proposed Town Services Committee motion to amend Item 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion has failed. Further discussion on Item 17. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item 17, and proceed to pull your delegation? Mr. Boutell? Well, when I called for, when I called for further discussion, I didn't see that hand reappear, so I assumed he had decided it was time to go home.
I surrender.
Okay. That being the last item to come before us, we will need to await the result of the pending vote before proceeding to adjourn. We have the result of the vote on Item 17, which is the authorization to accept donations for the anniversary celebration. Those in favor, 174; opposed, 1, abstaining 0. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting and absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.